Okay, good evening and welcome. It is the January 22nd, 2024, Meeting of the School Committee. Call the meeting to order 5:03. This meeting is being both audio and video taped today. I would ask that everyone please now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please. Samantha, if you would start us.
Samantha Velazquez, Secretary.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Antonella Rochella.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Sarah Trulio.
Kate Lyden.
Amy DeLanta.
Sandrine Alvidor, Student Representative.
Okay, welcome, everyone. We have minutes for approval. Please adjourn the motion on those.
Move to approve the January 8th, 2024, regular session meeting minutes?
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
By Antonella, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Sam. Committee and subcommunication. Sandrine, would you like to start us this evening?
Sure. Not much has happened because there's a snow day and then it's been very uneventful, but there are some events. The sophomore class is hosting two fundraisers. Fun double good popcorn fundraiser. They're hoping to sell enough popcorn to get money for their prom. And a Panera fundraiser on the 25th, I believe, 6:00 PM. Not quite sure about the time, but I know it's this Thursday. The National Honor Society is also doing a fundraiser starting the 29th to raise money for a charity. They're going to be selling carnation flowers for Valentine's Day, $2 for one and $5 for three. Otherwise, nothing else.
Who is the National Honor Society raising funds for?
Have to decide.
Huh?
Oh, not yet.
Excellent. Thank you, Sandrine. Thank you, Kate.
I just wanted to talk about quickly. Mountain View had their first bingo night, and it was very popular and a fun family night. I got to only peek in during basketball there, but we got a lot of good feedback from that. So that was exciting. And then I just wanted to mention the basketball, high school basketball team and the wrestling team. I've seen they're expanding their connection to the youth program. So the basketball coach is having guest managers where the kids from the travel team or the rec team to come, and they get to meet the players before the game and sit on the bench and learn about basketball, and they loved it, you know, stand in the lineup. And then the wrestling team was doing something similar. They had a lot of volunteers coming to practice and talking to the kids and showing them, you know, going over wrestling, and then they volunteered at some of the meets. So the little kids are looking up to them, and it's really nice to get excited about the high school programs. Yeah.
Great for the older kids as well, to get as much out of it.
Excellent. They have. They're so good with the kids.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kate. Sarah?
I was able to attend also at Mountain View. They had the strings, and they had the chorus, and they had the band, and they had a performance the other day, and that was wonderful. It was really exciting to hear how much earlier in the year, both of the educators were talking about they were able to acquire new skills. So things with the bow that they weren't usually able to do this early in the year, this group have been able to. And the band in particular, they were speaking to the fact that they were able to do some more sophisticated, you know, moves with their instruments. And in fact, the kids were telling jokes, and then the band was kind of making that like wah, wah. And like, they were doing like, go Spartans, go. Like, they were really teaching them some of the stuff similar, Kate, like, to what they would be experiencing in a high school. So it was really neat to see. And then I joined Gordon at the Diversity and Equity Steering Committee, and Heather was there as well. We really took a deeper look at the panorama survey data and tried to develop some root causes and then also some action steps connected to that. So it was a well-attended meeting. And then I have been working to get in contact and solidify a date to visit Maple Shade. That's my partner's school, and I haven't gotten out there yet, but we've been emailing Connor and I, and he's got some learning labs coming up in February that I'm going to try it out on present at. So.
Fantastic.
That's our question. Yep.
Thank you, Sarah.
I don't have anything today.
Okay, excellent. A few updates on the building, the high school building. Things are moving forward, I feel significantly now. Solidifying plans, getting more into details, both for the pool and for the high school. Today, I had a meeting, talked about the outside fields, some issues in placement of the baseball diamonds and foul balls into neighboring areas. So real, you know, nitty gritty of it, where to put the golf cart inside the building. So down to some of the specifics. But also the educational spaces outside, both outside and inside. And exciting that the construction management company interviews have happened last week. I actually asked to sit on them. I was not on the subcommittee specifically, but selfishly, I wanted to learn a little bit from it. And they were fantastic presentations. That committee is coming forward with a recommendation to the both pool committee and school committee. Hopefully, Thursday this week, we're working to schedule the school buildings already. I think it's pool verified. Coming together as well. So that's exciting because then we're going to bring on the partner that's going to help us build this thing. And man, it's pretty cool. Pass around some of the material that some of those groups brought in. All fantastic groups and certainly informative just by those illustrations. So that exciting. And, you know, you talked about the arts. You know, I think we should try to get them as much involved in this new building as we go. So if anybody has thoughts on how we can, you know, get that involved as well, even those outdoor spaces. It's cool, very cool stuff, so. With that, we will move forward to opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Hi, Lori. It's not you yet, but you're welcome to come up and join us. And actually.
Not yet.
Yeah, come up, please. If I could take a motion to move Lori out of order, are we going to start with 5:24? Does that make sense, the policy?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I'd entertain a motion to take 5:24 for next order of business out of order to 5.25, 5.2.5 and 5:26, returning to 5:1.
Removed.
Motion made by Sarah. Is that anywhere?
Second.
Sam?
I have a recording. I'll get it.
Motion made by Sarah, second by Antonella. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. Hi, Lori. How are you? Welcome.
It's official now.
It is official. The things we have to do to get you updated.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Well, thank you. I just have a couple of things, probably, they should be in your packet, that were brought up. We had our review from Desi on January 3rd and 4th. So there was a couple of corrective action items that needed attention because of the review, but overall, blind colors on the review? I think it was pretty extensive, but.
They're on the exit interview with Lori and the reviewer, and she said by far, this is the best school service program that she has visited. So kudos to her team. But of course, it's a review and it's an audit, right? So there's always things that we can be better at, and that's why Lori wanted to.
Yeah, and things that it was, it was quite, it was, it was a good learning experience too. So I don't know if there, is there a certain order that there's?
Yep, the first one is the.
School nutrition policy.
Charge, okay. So it was brought to my attention by the reviewer. We actually have an old meal charging policy that's.
I did. It's in there for you.
The old one. She would like that updated with the new charge policy because of the permanent free meals for all. So in the packet has, is the policy that we, I would like to have updated and put in place.
And this is the language from the MAS.
I was going to say.
Oh, yes. A few revisions to model it to our district, such as, on the second paragraph there, it does say, "The district provides free meals to all students. One free meal per meal service. Free breakfast will be implemented at all five schools in September 2024." We are mandated for September right now. Lori's, I'll let you take it.
Yes, so I am in discussion with Project Bread, but also Desi and the Office of School Nutrition has said that a memo is forthcoming. We don't have firm details, but we'll be getting more details, but it's coming down to the pipeline because it is in the legislation with the permanent free meals that Governor Healy put in place. So we will be working on getting that implemented everywhere for September.
That's a state-funded increase?
Yes. Massachusetts is picking up the cost of, to make the meals free for all. We're just one of eight states, so otherwise, it all is federal funds. Does that have to be in the classroom, or can it be grab and go, or can it be in the cafeteria, or is that just everything? Breakfast, we have a lot of options. I was just on a phone call with Project Bread, who was very helpful at the implementation in Maple Shade, breakfast in the classroom. And we have a lot of options, before the bell, after the bell, grab and go, cafeteria, classroom. I think you have to work with the individual principals to see, you know, how their flow might go. But my big concern was they do allow time on learning if it's in the classroom, like Maple Shade. So that could be incorporated, breakfast like as a snack time kind of thing. But then at the high school, we're doing a pilot right now. It's before the bell, and the kids, because they get let in at seven, and the bell doesn't ring till 7:25, they're in the cafeteria, and they can do a grab and go breakfast. So it's quiet. Not a lot of kids arrive at. Have you been, had a chance to do breakfast yet, Sandrine?
Yeah, I have. I find it very nice because especially if I have a quiz or test, having something extra is really helpful.
Yeah, and most of it is, it's all packaged, and we always have like a granola bar. So even if it's something they don't want to eat right then and there, they can have it in their backpack for maybe, you know, right before the exam time. But not a lot of takers on that yet. Low participation on that, but we'll get there.
So receipts on buying lunches that will no longer be, that's going to change the operational budget at all? Or I know we have a revolving fund that we use for some capital improvements or?
It's the one account, food services.
Right, so how is this going to affect that? Are we going to have the same revenue, but only but?
Let Lori answer that.
Funded, or state grant funded?
State and federal.
Well, we both, the funds are, basically, we're getting the same amount of money. It's just coming from the different avenues. But we're getting, I would say, a nicer chunk because the state is funding at the free reimbursement level of the $4.38 for this school year. So we do have a very healthy balance. I do have a spend down, you know.
Plan.
Plan, and have been speaking with Desi for that, and we do have some major projects coming up. As you know, we just did the Burchland Park walk-in freezer refrigerator. Meadowbrook is in need of one. So actually, that just went on Conbuys, out to bid this week. So that's another biggie coming down the line.
Is the spend down on the revolving account specifically?
Yes.
And that revolving account will no longer exist?
Oh, it will.
Oh, no, it always, yes.
You replenish by the federal, the state grant and the federal fund.
If you recall, the last quarter, I think we had like $400,000, and she's supposed to have about three months' worth of operating expenditures, which is about 250, if I was just a.
Right, a little bit more.
You always inquire, like, what's that extra? You know, what's that extra?
Yeah.
And it's for the capital projects.
Right, so how is that going to be modified? Changed?
So the money that you lose for people who are paying now is going to be made up through the federal government paying us for those meals. And then we still make the money on the à la carte.
So dollar for dollar?
That right now, they're paying for the full $4.38.
Or more than?
Right, we're, we're going to be in a little bit.
Okay.
Shape.
And that's based on the state budget, though, going forward and funding that the same way that it does now, which we anticipate.
Part federal, part state, I believe.
We anticipate that because they've been very pro.
Never in our way.
So we still have to do the eligibility of status of the children because the back end of it, the state needs to know which child was free because that will come from the federal monies and which child is still qualified, you know, as paid student. And then they, the state makes up the difference in their bucket.
So.
To get me the full $4.38 for everybody.
Is our free and reduced picture going to change? Because the only necessary reason for people to apply for free and reduce is to get free and reduce. If we're going to give it, if the state is paying for it free anyway, is that going to change the federal allocation because we don't get as many people claiming?
Possibly.
Yes and no. I mean, I'm still mandated to send out the free and reduced lunch applications. They go out every first day of school. They're always available online. Parents are always encouraged if there is a need because there's other entitlements behind that free and reduced eligibility. So that's always there. I am still always required to run the direct certifications, which are the, you know, directly certified eligible children through the state.
That don't have to fill out a.
That don't.
Right. Application.
And that seems to still be about the same percentage. I mean, I see the free and reduced percentage down a little bit, but not tremendously because a bulk of our free and reduced kids were always direct certified. We never had a lot of paper applications.
Oh.
So does that, does that answer that?
Yes. And then to your point about the walk-in coolers, we're going to look at Meadowbrook next.
Yes. Yes, I already had David Swain come out, do the measurements, do, give me the preliminary plans so that I had specs in order, and that's out on Conbuys right now for, you know, requesting bids.
On Friday, right?
Yeah.
Down the road after that, any big things coming up that you foresee?
Yeah, the next one is the Maple Shade Serving Steamwell. It's original to the school, so I have a phone call into Mr. Barrows at DPW. Dave Swain looked at that, too. That might involve a little help with the DPW because it's built into the floor. And, but it's not, it needs to be replaced, and that's another, probably a big ticket item because of the nature of how it's in the line.
Cool.
Yeah, and there's a lot of other little things.
Yeah, no, I bet.
Turn around, something's falling apart.
So in terms of moving forward with the high school, new high school project, in terms of what's needed here at this building now and what will be needed in the future, are we in coordination on that?
We actually just got an email. I don't know if you read it.
Okay.
That Lori asked, and they've been very receptive anyways, to every department. And Lori reached out, I don't know, maybe a month or.
Yeah, because it was supposed to.
Just want to make sure that, you know, she's involved in the plans, and she's heard some, being at Lori Goes To. She's very involved with the state and very well-known throughout the state for food service. She's been on some webinars and some new items that, and also you learn lessons from other people who have already been through this kind of project, that things that went wrong, that Lori wants to ensure don't go wrong.
Yes.
So she voiced her opinion, and they just emailed this afternoon.
Yes, Jill followed up, yeah, because they had to cancel their December meeting with me. So, yeah, I'm just going to wait for her to give me a.
Will you come with ideas for them to incorporate things that will encourage healthy eating? Because I know the environment has a lot to do with it. Newer cafeterias are different than they were 24 years ago.
Absolutely.
And even, you know, 57 years ago.
Absolutely, and they have a lot of new items. Again, I keep going back to Dave Swain, but they're a company that likes, they have a working, operating kitchen. You can go look at new equipment, but they have a lot of nice new equipment coming out, like combi ovens and things that you can, you know, do healthy cooking quicker. And we never, I mean, we don't have fryers or anything. We never have, you know, to do some nice items and different types of, you know, tilt skillets and kettles and going to go have a field trip there.
Salad bars or islands for food, you know, if we could be even creative about the atmosphere and your expertise and knowledge in that, you know, I would encourage to share with.
Absolutely, and I, again, I, I can't wait to see, you know, from the preliminary discussions with the architects, that feels like it's been a year now. I wanted to see exactly what space we're being allocated because we also do still need to meet some of the, even though it's free meals for all, I still need to record the meal at the point of service, make sure they have their components. So logistically, too, we have to make sure, you know, the open food court concept sometimes sounds great, but it's very difficult to then monitor what the children, are they taking the appropriate components, and are we cashing out everything that they are, you know, have on their tray? So.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was really happy, they were very helpful in that original initial interview they had with me, I guess. So, yeah, I can't wait to talk with them.
And they told you it was all electric? We're going to be 100% electric in the building? If not, we are, just so you know.
Oh, okay. They, they didn't say that, but that's what we have.
Warming, oh, we don't use.
Yeah, we have that now here. Burchland Park is half and half. And I think the other school, the other schools don't do a lot of cooking, but their ovens are electric. So, yeah.
Great.
It's nice. And, yeah, we'll do a field trip to like the test kitchens and stuff. Yeah, yeah. Oh, so what do I, do you need me to read this?
Yeah, your first policy.
Okay, so I'm, yes, so I'm asking for approval on this school nutrition program charge policy update?
This is actually based on the Mass Association of School Committees' policy that they updated in 2024.
And it's referred to as the Meal Charging Policy, Policy EFD, is that correct?
It's actually School Nutrition Program Charge Policy.
Right. Yeah, we took that out because there is really no charge for the, for the first meal. They can always purchase additional meal. That's considered à la carte.
I would entertain a motion to approve that policy, please.
I need to approve the revision to the ELPS policy, EFD charging policy, for recent Desi.
If we could just make it this one instead, though, the.
What did I do? Oh, sorry.
That's why I asked, but I know where you are.
Okay, okay. Move to approve the revision to the ELPS policy to the School Nutrition Program Charge Policy as presented.
Policy EFD.
EFD.
I'm really not that picky. Sam, you got it? Yeah, thank you.
Is that okay? Yeah, good.
Motion made by Kate.
I think.
I am that picky, I know, sorry. Second by Antonella. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Kate, she's got another one for.
Yeah, that the, obviously, it's the next one is the Civil Rights Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs. So it was brought to my attention that even though the school district has a civil rights policy, the Food Service Department has to have its own individual policy on top of that. So again, this civil rights complaint policy is from the.
MAS.
MAS, that Pam was able to.
Did not previously have, so.
Correct.
We took MAS's template straight up.
And we just added, obviously, the school district name.
Right.
So typically, we would go to a policy review committee on a new policy. We have that as a sitting subcommittee. This is from Desi as well?
Yeah.
From Desi. We felt we could bring it to the full committee, if it's from Desi, unless there's any objection, we could kind of move forward. Okay.
Second part, that is a link to Desi's website. Not only is it Desi telling us to have the policy, but then reporting the link right to their website, to the policy.
Questions on Policy EFE? Let's go, Kate, here we go.
All right, I'm in, okay. I move to approve the adoption of Policy EFE, Civil Rights Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs as a result of recent Desi Administrative Review of the ELPS Food Service Program as presented.
Thank you. Are you going to add that last part because I?
As presented.
Okay. Motion made by.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well.
So do we need to do the procedures or that?
We have the.
Do not.
Change in prices, so.
Right, so this was something that came about during the review as well, and again, I'll let Lori speak to that. Currently, we charge how much, Lori?
So, yes, so another item, again, was the adult meal price. Currently, we charge $4 flat price for an adult meal, which they get all the components. And then some, we try to, you know, give a little beefier plate, if you will, for an adult. I don't do a lot of adult meals, but they are a flat fee of $4. She said that that absolutely needs to be priced above what we are getting reimbursed for, for the student's free meal, plus the value of the USDA foods, and then, of course, state and local tax, which brings us to $4.99. So I'm asking that we bring that up as soon as possible so that I'm, beat the corrective action on that and make it an even $5, so I don't have to be playing with change. But to be proactive going forward, to do incremental increases, just so that we're ahead of the game and not having to always play catch-up and do a 525 for next, the next two school years, and then for the FY27, bring it to 550 so that we're staying in line with the proper guidelines.
Makes sense. Lori, you said not many, roughly in a day or week or?
Seven and a half. I looked it up because Pam asked the same thing.
Average daily, seven and a half?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's for the whole, just the whole, yeah.
Wow, one or two people per school, maybe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's great, but I'm sure they love it, so.
Yes, yeah, we have the regulars that seem to enjoy.
Yeah.
And then it's always if you forgot your meal, you know, give us a buzz down, we can put something together.
When was the last time we actually raised the price on?
I looked back on that, and I think it was 2015 or 16?
Yeah, I think it was the year I came, so I came in 15. It was like that following year. Because it used to be when they looked at the student pricing, because there was a formula, that the adult was also.
Yeah, we used to have the Paid Equity Lunch Tool that I would have to do to do the pricing for the student meals, and that kind of then populated out what you should do for adults. But, you know, we, we had COVID and we had, and now we're back.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'd entertain a motion, including the three specific increases.
I move to approve the price change for the adult meal to $5.
April 1st of 2024?
April 1st of 2024.
Two, the 525 and 550. So 525, FY25 and FY26?
Incremental increases for fiscal year '25, '26 to 525, and fiscal year '27 to 550.
Motion made by Antonella. Second by Kate. Any discussion? If you say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Five to zero. Yeah, anything else?
Not. No. Do we get it all? I don't know, I feel like I've been on this for, since she left my office.
Lori, thank you.
Yeah, Lori Paul, appreciate all the work you do. Thank you for coming tonight.
Good to see you all.
You too. Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll move back to 5.2.1.
Yep, so.
From Grinnan Barrett.
Right, in your packet is a letter from Principal Elaine Santinello at Mountain View School, asking the school committee to accept a check for $1,436.52 from Grinnan Barrett for the fall commission. And this will be placed into Mountain View gift account.
Approve the gift of $1,436.52 check from Grinnan Barrett to Mountain View School to put in their gift account.
Excellent, motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any discussion? I mean, several thousand across the district. That's right.
Yeah, I know.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries five to zero. And another one?
Similar to that one. In your packet, you'll see a letter from Principal Steve Pearson at Burchland Park, asking for the school committee to accept the $2,430.80, again, from Grinnan Barrett, to be placed into the Burchland Park gift account.
Move to approve the check from Grinnan Barrett for $2,430.80 to put into the gift account at Burchland Park School.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Kate. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Carries five to zero. Excellent, thank you.
Great. I have one more item.
Yes, please, Pam.
Okay, so in your packet, you'll see that a letter came to the superintendent, Governor Lieutenant, Lieutenant Governor, for a new grant. This is FY '24 Fund Code 274, a federal targeted special education program improvement grant for $25,746. And this will help the district implement the new IEP software programs that, I don't know if you have anything to add on it, Mr. Speaker?
As I'm sure all of you know, we're implementing, actually, the whole state is implementing a new IEP for next year, which is causing people to have a lot of fun. So we're going to be going from one IEP software to actually Power Schools IEP software. So that's an à la carte purchase. So this will help with not only the purchasing of it, but the training and then also getting some trainers in each of the buildings so we can have a sort of train the trainer model and make sure that we have a smooth implementation next year.
I believe this grant ends similar to ESAR, September 30th, 2024. So we have a little time into the next fiscal year as well.
What software do we use now?
E-Star, used to be.
SPAD E-Star.
It's changed its name with time since.
Exactly. Here, it's got a new name.
I think it was E-SPAD at one time.
I think so, too. Yeah, that's right.
It is, yeah. All right.
They had an opportunity to present how they were going to handle the new IEP, as did Power School. And Power School did a better job.
We do need a formal approval of the grant.
Approve the federal targeted special education program improvement grant of $25,746.
Second.
Motion made by Antonella. Perfect. The second by Kate. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Carries five to zero.
Great, I'll get that set up for you. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on for some budget discussion, FY '20, '25, and development of budget. I have two different ones. Is this the two new pages on the?
That's the new.
Again.
You had your packet before everyone else?
I did. Thank you, okay.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry about that. Totally my fault.
Talking about, we also at your places had put a new calendar because there was a mistake in the calendar that was in your packet. That's coming later on in the agenda.
I know that does not say items.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thinking, Gordon, as I apologize. As we've talked about, we're going to keep the same document going forward. And as things get updated, that's exactly what we're going to do. I did double check before we came to today's meeting. The governor's budget is not out yet. This is typically the week it comes out. So hopefully, in the very near future, we'll hear something and have something, some news at our next meeting. But we did add down at the bottom of the page here, talking about the areas of focus for the budget development, is we did want to add Title I, a potential reduction of $160,000. We currently do fund two teachers. I think one is a .65 and the rest is on the operating and one full teacher and six paras on Title I. And this is going to have a huge impact here because the grant is about, last year's grant was $303,000. So $160,000 reduction is pretty significant. They tie the formula to prior year free and reduced. I don't know if you can explain it better, Gordon?
Federal poverty level.
Thank you, the, yeah, poverty level from like 2021.
So their data is two years behind, two fiscal years behind. They're not using the same formula that Massachusetts uses for low income, their formula, in terms of establishing, say, the percentage of low income students we have in the district. They're using the federal poverty level.
Do we, does someone have to self-report to qualify and then thus be counted? Is it the same issue that we were just talking about with free and reduced?
I don't believe it's, could be.
Could be.
Could be that.
Could be, Greg, I'm not.
But they're using, so the number that the state uses, they then actually use a multiplier and increase it. So they go above the federal poverty level. Federal poverty level is lower than what the threshold for low income status.
This is specific to East Long Meadow, correct? The change to lose the 160? No, across the board, everybody lost?
There were.
If their federal poverty statistics is down, then they will be losing federal.
I didn't look at all the.
But we don't, well, how does East Long Meadow fit into the federal poverty?
I'm just talking about the definition of what the federal poverty level is. So our data around people who qualify are under that threshold of income went down two years ago.
And how does the federal government, or how do we, or how does?
Probably you are correct. It's through.
Only through free and reduced?
That would be my guess. You have the direct certified.
So every district must have the same problem in the state of Massachusetts?
I would think we're not alone. And I didn't go on to, obviously, when.
This is like a legislative hiccup, like this is not.
I think so. And there was an email, and I will go back.
You have two pots of money. You have federal money, Title I, boom, and you have.
Right, but the state money is driving the statistics to go down for no other reason than that the federal money exists. And we're being affected by $160,000 less in Title I, which directly correlates to staffing. Because in theory, we have less need, but we don't have less need. We don't have half the need we did last year.
Yep.
Actually, if you think about it, because they're, you saw on the website, they're two years behind in their data. So that puts it in the middle of the COVID pandemic, which means that a lot of people probably weren't reporting.
Right.
So we should, it should be a blip, most likely. This year, we would go down. Hopefully, it's not $160,000. But that's been the initial email alert.
It's $159,000 something on the spreadsheet. So I just rounded to 160. And that was on a spreadsheet that I looked at from DESI. So I agree with what your thought process is, Greg, and there's probably going to be, I heard this on my listserv, so another business manager reaching out. What's everybody doing about this reduction? So you're right, there is.
It must be across the board.
It must be.
For the state only. Other states are reaping the benefit of the giant pool of federal money that's now really allocated to other.
I will reach out to someone, you know, at DESI to see if I can get more information for you.
Because what are we going to do without the 160? Thanks for those.
Well, that's, so that's a discussion for the school committee. That's why Gordon and I wanted to bring this to your attention because we just found out.
Okay.
But it is a discussion that we're having.
And I'm hoping that that number will come down. But again, that's all that we've been told. So we wanted to put it on here, be transparent, let you know what we're hearing.
Can you put that into perspective in terms of what that portion funded?
Money?
Yeah, how many position that $160,000?
$260,000 is the fund in salaries. The two teachers and the six paras. The paras, $130,000.
So you're talking.
$132,000.
1.65 teachers. And then?
Yeah.
Six pairs, yeah.
Just so that you realize what happens behind the scenes, whenever we get the new grant each year, there's always a little bit of shifting, right? I might get a little more, I might get a little less. So I might, instead of being .65 for a teacher percent, I might be, have to do .63 or a .68. So there's always a little bit of shifting, not enough that I need to be bringing it to your attention like this. It's just very minor things. But this, this is significant. So yes, I'll reach out and see what I can find. And again, those will be further discussions that we're going to have to have.
Don, do you have something?
My side, Ben?
Yeah, please.
Oh, only because listening to the discussion, the federal poverty rate and the way that's measured is all through federal data. I don't think the correlation that you maybe surmise that it's tied to self-reporting for free and reduced lunch really exists at all.
So through the IRS must be.
IRS, through tax credits, people who apply for, like, found out in 38 states.
This significant?
As can.
More than a half?
Yeah. So I mean, I'm just glancing at this.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think it.
Correlation.
I just don't want people to sort of have the idea that, oh, now they're giving kids free lunch and now we're going to lose to a teacher and a half because of that. I don't.
Okay, good.
No, that's fair.
Thought it was worth, sort of shucking to see.
So we'll look into it further and.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I just don't want to leave that impression.
No, and I don't want to leave that impression either, if that's not the case. Thank you, Don. Okay, well, that's exciting or interesting.
Well, it's interesting, yeah. So we wanted to let you know that. And so we have completed our internal budget meetings. Gordon and I sat with every principal, and we wanted to bring forward the items. Do you want to take it from here, Gordon?
Sure, I mean, you're doing great.
Well, okay, I'll continue. So the first one, special education. We have currently an adaptive PE teacher that is an at-will employment agreement position. Prior years, there wasn't as much of a need. So what I've seen since I, this is my ninth year in the district, I've seen the needs change. So before, we might have had the adaptive PE at 15 or 20 hours nine years ago. And it's gradually increasing, especially this last, since the pandemic. So she's doing a great job. Michael feels very strongly, Michael is the Director of Student Services, that we would like to get her into the Unit A if possible. It would be, we feel, it would be, there's not a change in money because she is already in the operating budget. She's just not in Unit A. So it is a 1.0 F T E that is in the employment at-will agreements that we would like to see go into the Unit A, if that makes sense.
I just, all I would add to that is, so as you know, our at-will contracts deal with needs that aren't necessarily needs that we see as being permanent needs, that they could switch, change over year to year. In this case, our adaptive PE needs, since I've been here, has gone from a contracted service that was maybe two times a week increasing maybe three times a week at different schools to the last, at least two years, going to a full-time employee. And for each of these, we tried to give you not only a synopsis in the budget development document, but then also provide the backup from the department head or coordinator. And as Mrs. Blair was saying, this position right now, we don't see the need going away. And we know that it's a pretty competitive situation in terms of districts looking for adaptive PE teachers. So the position right now is benefits eligible. The position is receiving benefits, actually, in this case, through a spouse in the district.
Is the position benefits eligible at will? It's still eligible?
Because it's full-time.
Because it's more than .5?
Yes, yes. So they are eligible. And if we have those individuals, the laws are pretty clear.
So if we were to lose the individual.
Yeah.
We would still probably, or if we weren't going to bring it into Unit A, we would still have to advertise for an at-will employee, and it would be a benefits-eligible position. So that's where we're seeing it not being a change in the operational budget.
Yeah, can I throw some cold water on that?
Please.
I agree, as a certified PE teacher, the need is there and forever probably will be. Every year in the budget development process, we talk about new F T Es, so new full-time employees. And this one, specific because it's at-will, has never gone through the, quote, "new full-time employees" in our discussion. Last year, how many employees did we add F T Es? Who remember, I don't, one? What was it?
Social, emotional.
Right.
Build back.
So that one went through the cut first. But a new F T E, though, from not the year prior. Yep.
Yeah.
And so this, I would consider a new F T E because it has never been a new F T E before. And the reason I say that is because the town keeps growing exponentially, right? So every budget process, we should claim new F T Es. So whenever a new position comes through, we should claim it somewhere, right? This one hasn't been claimed yet because it's an at-will, so we pay for it year by year. So all I'm saying is I'd like to call it a new F T E and perhaps have discussions with town manager, town council, on how we just track F T Es from year to year, whether they be grant-funded, whether they be at-will, or whether they be funded by the operating budget. Because I don't know that we have a true picture of that. And as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about that long term because over my 15 years, we've added a lot of positions across the town. So I don't know what we call it. I would like to say it's a new F T E.
May I add to that?
Yes.
Explanation? So the at-will employees are always incorporated in our budget overall presentation to the town because they always ask for the total employees for the school department. In that total are at-will employees, and they ask for the previous total. So they always see how many new employees might be on there.
Specific to the at-will? So there's a category of at-will F T Es, budget-based F T Es?
I don't remember if I had an at-will.
So maybe that's the solution.
That you'd like to have that.
Now, we just do that year by year and acknowledge it during the budget process. This many at-will F T Es, this many? Because really, we always talk about new budget oriented or funded by the budget F T Es. So I just see that this one is, so that's a new F T E, right? That's one for me. Okay.
Can I just say something? Because whenever we're talking with the town, their perception of a new F T E is different than our perception of an F T E. And I just, because I made that mistake once and I tried to adhere to what we were talking about, and I felt like I was almost like, I don't want to say penalized, but I felt badly after, during the budget process. This was probably five or six years ago process. This was probably five or six years ago, because what I said on my documents, since I'm the one who does all this for you and gets it to them, I said that this was a new FTE. But in the end, when we were kind of going through this, do you remember this? That they, that they said, "That really shouldn't have been like that, Pam. It should have been because you already have that person. This isn't a brand-new."
But that was the town accountant that said that at the time. Is that correct?
Uh.
That judgment?
I don't remember if it was a town accountant or, I guess.
Financial, I'd say, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Are we able to differentiate between grant-funded, at-will-funded, and budgetary-funded positions? Can we do that?
Yes, yes, I can.
So, can we have that discussion perhaps tomorrow night?
And I think.
On how to define an FTE?
I just want to be very honest with you all because I did feel like I had somehow, like, let you down or let, because we didn't get the position, and it wasn't new in their eyes, and it just became this huge discussion. So, thank you.
And I think it matters what you call it in the discussion, right?
It does, yeah.
One point of discussion for tomorrow.
We want to, Mrs. Blair tomorrow?
Mrs. Blair's not available.
I'm so sorry, I have a.
So, it might be a discussion that we want to have with town manager, finance director, deputy town manager, just because that's, they're creating the sheets and how it's.
Can we broach the subject tomorrow night to have further discussions as a smaller subgroup?
Sure.
But just the differentiation, if it's even possible to do that on the other town side?
With a goal of reducing any confusion.
Full dis, just full disclosure on how all FTEs are funded, right? It'll make us all, or me feel better. So, okay, excellent.
Yes, thank you for hearing me out.
Everybody else is feeling pretty good.
Good.
Sorry.
No, you're right. That's great. That's a good thing.
Okay, so that, that one was the first one. And then, we do have, we're looking at increasing an ELL teacher, at least a point-five FTE, since 2014, so roughly ten years ago, when we had approximately eleven English-language learners in the district. We've now grown three hundred and eighty-one point eight percent to fifty-three, almost fifty-four, English-language learners in the district. And so, in doing so, we have three ELL teachers. We are giving support pre-K all the way to twelve, or stretching those teachers pretty well. And next year, we don't believe that we'll be able to stay with the recommended hours that the state gives us through their guidance.
Are those IEP-driven, the amount of hours required when our first student?
It's a recommendation.
ESL is not.
Yeah, ESL is not. Although, you do have ELL students who are on IEPs.
Yeah. Do we currently, we, I believe we get other outside count, or additional services for ELL? Not the three, not just the three teachers that we have? We bring in outside contractors as well?
Not a lot. When we went, when we hired our third teacher, we were able to do mostly direct services by staff.
Okay.
Do they administer the access test and then, okay, and then, so they're doing all, and when a new student comes in, they're screening?
Yeah.
So, that's a lot, too.
It's a lot, yeah. There was a good amount of emotional coaching beginning of the year. I think we're already there.
So, potentially an additional ELL, a point-five. We're at three now.
Is an additional, correct, yes.
This would be.
So, go to three point-five ELL positions?
ESL.
ESL, and not?
Because we taught it.
So, that would not be a, that's not an FTE, that's a half-time employee, not?
Teachers, if they're half-time, are benefit-eligible, so I just.
Is it point-five that drives that?
That's correct.
We can look at point-four.
So, we should, we should make that clear as well?
Yeah.
Well, but, yeah.
Point-five.
Would we not get one if we don't offer the point-five?
Probably not.
Right? Because I'm sure that's.
It's pretty competitive.
They're probably.
I don't know if you want a good point-five.
Yeah. I don't know if we're going to get one at point-five. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, we probably won't.
Might.
We knew.
If someone's looking for part-time.
One of the things I want to make sure I say is, we've had the discussions with the leadership team, and so, this is not a, you know, pie in the sky. We, I don't think we've ever brought, to all of you, pie-in-the-sky-type requests. These are, these are the needs. You know, there are some that we probably could have brought, but we kept in the discussion and left it on the table because we feel we can get by doing some of the things, and hopefully, some of the things that we plan to do next year without adding in certain areas.
Is there a proposal for the preschool, continuing to ensure appropriate staffing, or is that just the funding?
It's just making sure that we're looking right now in terms of preschool. We still have three paras on ESER. We're looking at how we're staffing each preschool classroom, what we feel has worked over the two years of expansion in terms of making sure that as students come in, that we can actually put them through an evaluation and not necessarily tie, you know, one para to one child immediately as we bring students into the preschool and then therefore pre-K through twelve. That's been working. It's taken some time. And so, we're hopeful that, you know, maybe the paras that we have are the paras that we need. We can go forward with it.
ESER is not going to fund those paras?
We have three paras that are on ESER, as well as.
The plan for those three specific positions?
Right now, we're evaluating whether we can go forward possibly without those three positions, yeah.
I do want to just mention, back with, to that ESL teacher, Director of Curriculum, Heather Brown, did put something in the packet for you?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me sure.
Okay, last year, we had brought the committee's attention that we're hoping to increase one FTE, a custodian at Meadowbrook. We have expanded the preschool last two years, and that has put a significant amount of new demands on the custodial. And we are schools supplementing right now on ESER. We have custodians who come in part-time and have been helping out, but most significantly at Meadowbrook.
And you'll see it, Ms. Lody's right up there, that she also talks about the fact that the schools now do this waste disposal differently, and there's different, and remember, these are your very young ones to try to get everything into the different bins.
I was thinking about that during breakfast, if we're implementing breakfast.
Exactly, which is, which is why Lori wants to do this very carefully and thoughtfully. Yeah, exactly.
Talking staffing and.
Custodial, the trash, that it's increased.
Last year, the town began to implement the new cycling and hosting regulations, and we went school by school, and now we're fully up and running. It does change how the lunchroom and after-lunch is managed. Meadowbrook, we're looking at a school of just under six hundred students, and over the last two to three years, we're seeing a spike in behaviors that students present. And we have always had two counselors there. We're thinking that we may need a third, and this certainly would help with our social-emotional classroom that just got back up and running this year. Currently, we have two counselors, both of whom actually are licensed adjustment counselors, and this would be a third counselor. Ms. Lody includes in her write-up more details on that.
I believe earlier in the year, Gordon, we sat with those folks. Here this year, right?
This year and last year.
Yeah. So, part of it is to make sure that we're listening to our, to our staff. The adjustment counselors that are there are dealing with a lot, and we'd like to retain those individuals as well. So, we felt that this needed to be brought forward.
And the other schools, who acts as the five oh four chairs? Is it common for the counselors to do?
Adjustment counselor and guidance counselors have acted as the five oh four chairs. I think as we added adjustment counselors, it switched over to the adjustment counselor for the five oh four chairs, and off of the guidance counselors played.
Okay, are we using, so if we talk, this question, say, three point-five FTEs? Are we budgeting what, no, in general, Masters eight or for all three, or not necessarily, right? So, I guess what's the additional budget request for those positions?
Sorry, I didn't put a dollar.
Generally, we have budgeted, you are correct, at Masters eight.
I don't know, the custodian's a different contract.
With an adjustment counselor, you might go a little bit higher because they have to, they're generally going beyond the Masters to get that licensure. It might be CAGs.
I'm sorry, my computer is not working right now, so I can't bring up.
Do you know Masters eight?
I'm going to say it's probably seventy-two thousand dollars. I'm totally guessing.
And then, the adjustment, you know, ten, ten more, so.
Well, so I was, the Masters eight, I'm sorry, I thought, I was thinking in my head of Masters forty-five, Step Eight, might be like seventy-two, seventy-five.
Talking about CAGs?
Yeah.
Seventy-five for the CAG, seventy-two for the Masters.
Yeah, I think that might be high.
I'm here would be.
Well, remember, we're in negotiations, too.
Because the ELL.
They're in Unit A.
Is point-five.
Right, so the adaptive would be.
But the adaptive, again, is already being, doesn't, doesn't, it impacts the number of employees, but it doesn't impact the operating budget.
Actually, it doesn't impact the number of employees.
No, it does impact the operating budget, not the number of employees.
They're both paid under the operating budget.
At-wills are.
Yeah.
At-will employees are in the operating budget.
So, that salary is already.
Not in the salary line, I don't know?
Yeah.
It is, but it's.
It's called out in a different.
Yes, it's just not under Unit A.
That one doesn't, even though.
I know, but sometimes we have to realize that.
No, I get it, but.
Dollar amount. We didn't realize it when we added it.
What do you mean we didn't?
We realized it when it happened, but we didn't recognize it, I should say.
You didn't call it out to what it was.
We recognized it in the amount of employees we had.
But not, we never acknowledged the, the new FTE.
So, it's moving.
Oh, you do.
I know. It's semantics, I know.
But I'm just saying it's not gonna.
Yes.
It won't impact the current operating budget.
Right, right.
Just saying you don't need another seventy-two thousand.
It's a commitment to fund a new position going forward, but it's not at-will.
So, as an example, today.
Not at-will.
So, the difference is.
It's adding it to you today.
When it's at-will, each year, you have to identify whether you have the need anymore to keep it as, in this case, a 1.0 FTE. Can we decrease it? Do we need it at all? And sometimes we change those, frequently we change them. That's why they're at-will. When we move it to Unit A, you do that less so because you're saying, "That's a need that's going to be consistent. It's now going to be governed by the Unit A contract." You still have, obviously, three years to see if this bit between employee and school system works, but you're recognizing that that's a need that's going to stay. However, we've never not stated to the town that we have this number of employees, including the at-will, and it's always in our salary line items overall. So.
So, as I'm.
Said one more thing.
Go ahead.
So, when we, last year, asked for an increase of three point-nine percent, it was in there.
As level services, though.
Right, yes.
Never claiming the new FTE. That's my only point. It goes back to the acknowledgement of the categories and the establishment of the three pods.
I was more just saying, we're not, we're not taking seventy-five thousand twice.
It's a valid point, valid, but in theory, we could add an at-will employee this year and put them on as a, next year, under the operating budget, and never claim that we added a position. I know we put it as the number, but it just happens. And when we developed the budget, we're clear that last year, we added one FTE, right?
We were clear about that.
But we add other at-will employees at other times and just add it. So, I just want to acknowledge that it's moving from the at-will to operating budget. It won't potentially cost anymore, but it's a long-term commitment.
Agreed, but.
Yeah, your point is, is I get it.
That's all I'm saying, is when we're talking, you were asking for a dollar figure. I was just saying, it's not.
It's wash.
It's wash, because we're already accounting for it in the operating budget. It's just not in the location.
So, that's exactly what I was just doing this afternoon, is looking at, because remember, I told you, I go through the different bargaining units, and I have to look at them and bring everybody up to where they're going to be next year. I was just looking at at-will employees. So, whether this person is on my therapeutic line that I do show FTEs, I add them all up. So, if somebody's just a point-five or a point-four, I total them down the bottom, and I believe on my, my internal spreadsheet, I've got that breakout. So, it's already part of the FTE and the budget, so it's not an increase. But respectfully, I understand what you're saying because you always want to be transparent, Greg, so that you just want folks to know this is going from an at-will employment to a Unit A if that decision were to be made. But, but the FTE is there and the money is there, just to be clear.
It's something you said, you add all the partial FTEs collectively, but should we differentiate those and call them a number of FTEs and number of less than FTEs?
Breakout, I can certainly give that to you. I have not done that breakout to show you that I have whatever X the positions.
Because those are the ones that aren't eligible for benefits unless they're five or more.
Yes.
But we have some that are not five or more.
Twenty hours.
That's correct. So, you can want the breakout of that.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Can we do that historically? Are you able?
That's a lot for.
Okay.
I could get it for you after.
But can, let's go forward, then.
Yes, I can.
With a baseline now, if we can have that conversation with the town, and we're all on the same page, then it would solve a lot of what I'm trying to accomplish, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome. And it's laudable, what you're trying to accomplish. Generally, in the discussions with the town, they're looking for the bottom line. You know, what's going to be the increase? What?
There's definitely emphasis on number FTEs that are added every year.
They definitely want to know.
We just said we added one last year, but we probably added more. That's all. In terms of at-will employees, halftime.
We had one Unity, Unity, yeah, or Unit A, sorry.
Right, and we're at, we had paras.
We had three paras.
We recognized that, though. We did. We said that we added.
Well, no, we, we recognize them, yes, for the ones that we took off of ESER, the three. But there are situations that require us to hire a new para now. We need to get a new para based on an IEP, perhaps as a one, one-on-one. And we'll add that para.
No, that's not true.
Well, we do if we have all the positions filled.
No, that's still not true.
I thought we did.
No.
I thought we added a mid-year.
I would love to.
Really try not to.
Okay.
Okay. If you were to talk to the principals, they would love to do that.
No, I imagine so, yeah.
Because what happens is, so generally, if we have to do that, we will bring it back here.
Okay.
So, yeah, we haven't gone, we may now just be hitting the full amount of paras that we budgeted for.
Okay. Oh, great. That's good news.
Yeah, it is good news. You had asked about, so this is twenty-three, twenty-four. Masters eight is sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and CAGs, eight is seventy-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
So, in theory.
That's before negotiations.
One hundred and eighty, yeah, just additional to the operating budget. That doesn't include the adjusted ESL. So, for two and a half.
Yeah.
Roughly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, the seventy times one and a half plus the seventy-four, because the half, and I know I'm applying it to, the custodians aren't on the same contract, but I'm just, it's an estimate.
That's where I was getting there.
Yeah, I counted.
And if we can, you know, if the best candidate is someone who has fewer years' experience, that's happened to.
How much did you say, Greg?
One eighty.
Yeah.
Seventy, thirty-five, seventy-four.
Yeah, so.
That's rough.
Might be a little high, yeah.
But to your point, we haven't done negotiations as well.
Correct, yeah, that's.
So, are we reflecting an assumption in the level services?
Yes, but I'm just now going to be working on Unit A because it's a bigger.
That will have to be part of the discussion, both the contractual increases and that no, that percentage, in terms of the number that we finally, or the amount that we finally request to, because that directly.
Impacts.
Because what's one eighty? What's the percent of increase to that operating budget? Hundred and eight thousand. What's our operating budget? Six, thirty-three?
Thirty-three?
So, percent and a half?
Yeah, it's just a half a percent, thirty-four.
Okay.
It's easy.
Yep, easy, half percent. Well, but plus the contractual and the level services, a little bit harder.
We're just working on the easy right now.
Good.
Okay. So, I know that there will be more discussion on that. Those are the needs going forward. Whether the committee chooses to put forth all needs as presented, that's, I know, for discussion.
Do we know what we're going to talk about tomorrow? Are we going to talk about these things?
I don't believe we're getting down to that type of specifics, but certainly, they would be interested, and I don't know that we're there yet. Blair won't be with us.
I'm sorry, I cannot be there.
In terms of where our level services budget might be. That question may come up.
Do you have an idea, Pam, without rushing, when that might be accomplished? A month?
Before a month.
Okay.
I've worked Saturday, Sunday. I'm trying my best for you guys.
The reason, we're not, I just, I just want to be able to tell them. I'm not trying to.
Make her watch.
No, they know that we're, we're shooting for February nineteenth.
They, they would like it.
For a proposal, or?
Some type of proposal.
When's our meeting around?
So, twenty-second. Isn't that, isn't our meeting with school committee on the?
We have on the.
I don't know our schedule.
For budget, I mean, in February.
So, we have one on the February fifth.
It's the twenty-sixth, I think.
Nineteenth.
Twenty-sixth after vacation.
End of the month.
So, we're looking to see what we can get done between now and the next school committee.
They had asked if I could give them, so remember, we're, we're one of the departments in town. So, the way it works on the town side is each department, the person in charge is doing their own individual budget, and they put it into Munis. Well, I'm your person here for the whole school, right? So, that's why it takes so much longer. But of course, they have a job to do, and I'm respectful. We're respectful of that. The town's budgets, the town department's budgets were due, I think it was January nineteenth. And then she said, "Kim, the finance director, ask, so how much time do you need, Pam?" And I said, "How much time can I have?" So, we kind of went back and forth, and she, she said, "Do you think you could, you know, another month, like February nineteenth?" And I said, "Possibly." And I said, "But, you know, we're not going to have the school committee meeting until the twenty-sixth." And then she suggested, and it was just a suggestion, "What if then you submitted the budget as department, and then after the school committee votes it on the twenty-sixth, then you could make any adjustments, and then that would be like going to the next level in Munis, like the town manager?" And you were uncomfortable with that and wanted it to wait until, so not give her anything until after you voted it on the twenty-sixth. Is that correct?
Should we move that date to the twentieth, our school committee meeting? Would that be helpful?
Twentieth during vacation.
During vacation week. She probably will be fine with it. It's just another.
Will she be there? Will she be there tomorrow? And we can ask her.
She will be.
She will be there tomorrow. I won't, I'm sorry.
Pam's already talked to her. She's requested for the 19th after telling we, we don't.
I mean, that was, that was, those are preliminary discussions.
They were preliminary.
They might be open to.
But she won't be.
Waiting until the 26th.
Ah, I'm sorry.
We could certainly give them updates. It's not like we're hiding any.
No, and I'm, I'm not trying to, but I just like the process of budget submitted and the budget's not finalized until it comes through all the way, I feel.
Right. And, and that makes, that makes sense and I'm sure that she will be respectful of that and it's only a short time later. So as Gordon said, those were preliminary discussions and, yeah.
Okay.
School choice.
Okay, so school choice. We now have taken a look at some of the things and broken them down more specifically that we've been doing on ESER and we feel we can, next year, move and pay out of the school choice revolving account. These specifically are the current high school Spartan Academy credit recovery, which this year actually is a pilot. We moved away, I think I had mentioned at a previous meeting, excuse me, we had moved away from using a more software-based program to actually having in-person, right now, three staff members running three days a week, two hours a day, and we offer it over two semesters. And so that, that's costing, we're estimating for next year, about $7,000.
Students are currently participating in that?
It tells how many students are participating.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't think I have that.
That's okay.
Then we have run over the last few summers, summer academy at the high school, summer academy at the middle school, and then an elementary program that encompasses pretty much K through five. We'd like to run those going forward. And these are all programs that, right now, we feel are benefiting our students, but they are supplemental. I know that one of the discussions we've had is that we don't want to tie future school committees to having to book, to continue with school choice if they choose that for a given year or period of time, they do not want to participate in school choice. The school choice program has built up a revolving account that's at a pretty good number. It will be over $600,000 at the close of this year and you'll be able to run these programs for a significant number of years because even if a school committee, even if this year in March, as we make that decision, you, if you chose, next year, we're not going to participate in school choice. So for that year, you wouldn't be adding students, but you still would have school choice students within the district. So you would still be bringing in some money and the funding of this, I think the total of running the summer academies plus the Spartan Academy credit recovery is about $165,000. So you would not be exhausting that money. To that end, we also had the discussion, we haven't gotten any proposals yet, but we did have the discussion because you had asked us to go back to the leadership team and look at specifically one-time purchases that might move things forward, whether it be on the playground or some type of instructional supply or a maintenance situation, whatever it may be. So we did have that discussion and hopefully we'll get proposals within the next week or so.
Last year, we added 178-ish, 9-ish thousand in revenue, school choice, that looked right, Pam, from 22 to 23. The difference, 124 to 313, those are, we took in 313,000.
Right.
Seventy-nine thousand more than the.
We're going to take in that same revenue again this year.
So because we have 34, now 43 students, the potential that some will require additional special ed needs and therefore costs, which we talked about originally when we talked about taking in school choice.
We get more revenue.
Well, only if they need circuit breaker.
No, no, actually, if they're on an IEP, because all of that is reported through the SACIT, the student ID number.
Yep.
You're, you receive additional funding almost immediately. So let's say, you know, 5,000 is what you're getting for the average school choice. We then may see receipts in that first payment for closer to 7,000 or 8,000. If they are a significant cost, then we report that through circuit breaker.
So then we have to pay the same way?
That's correct for any students.
For those we send?
That's, that's actually correct.
Are we tracking any of that?
Well, that's the, that's why I put the sending and the.
No, I mean those additional costs.
I did.
Above and beyond, no?
It's hard to track because it's money you never receive.
Oh.
They, they, they do it at the state level.
It's on the cherry sheet.
So if a student leaves us on their school choice, yes, we can get charts like this, but the money follows. We just never receive it in our chapter seven.
But we would receive it if they stayed here. So any child who's on an IP gets a greater reimbursement amount than those that are not.
Special education, yeah, through the chapter seven.
How come I never knew that? Or maybe I did, huh?
Because every day we learn something.
That's right. My point was to say that we have potential increased costs in special ed based on.
It's a new wash.
A new ed. But perhaps should we look to use some of the school funding, school choice funding for special ed costs and a good faith, understanding that those costs continue to increase. So we've potentially are spending some of that money on some of those students, but we're not, I guess, is the point that was just, I learned.
Correct.
Because I was going to suggest that we take some of the school choice funding.
Well, it's not, it's, it is an area that school committee could certainly decide to, if, you know, Michael.
Special education.
Yeah, bolster a new program, like.
It's not, it's.
Yes, absolutely.
It's a good idea. One of the reasons, one of the thoughts was, before we were looking at summer academies, was that we know special education costs can escalate quickly. And so that is a resource that you can use. In some cases, when you're talking out of district tuitions, it can be, eat up that resource very quickly.
But you're saying perhaps new programs internal?
Possibly.
I, I have seen other districts do that, sure.
I wouldn't be adverse to that because I think not only should we maintain, but perhaps we bring things forward with some of these new funds that we have.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So we can keep looking at those.
Right. And if we started to do more with our 18 to 22 population, it's not a budget that we currently have developed.
Yep. But our population of our community.
Is growing.
Yes.
Needs to take care of, yeah.
Is that what, sorry, in March, we, do we vote on, based on enrollment, the number of slots every year we're taking for school choice?
So we take a look at, yes, yes, we take a look at what the enrollment looks like specifically at each grade level.
Okay.
And then should the committee choose to continue to participate in school choice, then they vote on how many slots to open up.
Okay.
At the leadership.
At what grade level?
Based on.
Don't do it.
Those small classes.
Usually don't do it for high school.
We don't take, oh, okay.
We did originally though.
We did originally, yeah.
But we haven't.
We haven't in two years.
Last couple of years.
Yeah.
Yep, focusing on the younger students. But that's a decision of every school committee in March, yes, to your point. And they could decide to not take any more. Those that are already here, continue, as you know. But new ones, you can see the progression, the 15, the 23, the 38, 43, that's how many we've added every year. You can see it directly right there at the bottom of the chart.
That's total.
That's total.
Yeah, I know. So from 15, then we added eight more to 23, and then we added 11 more to 34. See that at the bottom of the blue chart, blue side?
Three, three, four, 43, yes.
Nine.
And then we added nine last year, yeah.
So credit recovery is three days a week after school?
Correct.
Yes.
Two hours, two hours a day.
Which days is it?
Monday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Thursday, yep.
Go inside to the late bus. Actually, the late bus would be gone, so it doesn't really matter, but it does go inside of the late bus. Circuit breaker reimbursement history?
It was there.
Okay.
And.
Over 1.3. Is that new? I thought it was going to be less than last year.
Well, this was the same at the last meeting, what I said.
Okay.
Tuition revolving account, nothing has changed on the page, but I will just make mention that I said that the, that there's a preschool coordinator that is currently funded under ESER. You know, it is possible that the tuition revolving account could fund that. You have to be careful because we want to make sure that there's a balance, you know what I mean, that we don't eat up that account currently. If you take a look at that, we do have a pre-K teacher being funded there and two paraprofessionals.
We do feel comfortable that you could put the preschool coordinator.
On that, so that wouldn't be, you know, the operating.
The numbers down in terms of tuition paying.
Correct, right.
We have slots open still that have days. So potentially if we fill them all, the revenue would be higher.
Potentially, yes.
But even if not, we can fit the.
I kept the revenue conservatively lower for that reason.
Has that progressed?
Just in case.
The 284, that's grown over the years, the ending balance?
Yes, well, you can see that.
Last year was two.
Yep, 284, roll that over. What I'm expecting in the revenue, I reduced down a little bit because I think I first had like 130, we're not going to get 130. So I didn't want to overstate that and I'd rather show a conservative number there and.
So fourth category, tuition FTEs funded through tuition. Grants, tuition, operating budget, and at-will.
Right.
But at-will or operating budget as well.
Right.
Right.
Which is why we usually do, excuse me, that whole picture slide. Tells you what the cost is of the entire program because without grants, without some of the revolving accounts, couldn't do a number of our programs. That's one way to keep the level services down. Go from ESER to the tuition revolving.
So as, as I'm doing.
Yep.
Sorry.
Pam, can I just ask you how that works specifically though? So you, you move that pile of the, the 61 and the 28, you essentially move that out of these revolving accounts?
It's charged on payroll directly.
Okay. So the same would it be?
So when you're signing payroll, at the end, there's a, there's a summary of the different accounts and there's a revolving account in there, just like the grants, if there's somebody that's paid under a Metco grant, under the IDEA grant, under Title I. It's a different funding source on that payroll. So when I have my spreadsheets, so now I'm taking my last year's spreadsheets and I've got to look at them, right? Make sure I've got my retirements all accounted for and put them at a lower amount because we're hoping we're going to have a little savings there. It doesn't always happen, but a lot of times, most of the times it does. I'm also then taking, if I need to, if I need, if I know that, and this is why I need to have these discussions with you, because I don't want to make some assumptions and move somebody without you telling me to do that. Does that make sense? So with this preschool teacher right now, when I'm going to run my, and I do a pivot table and it all comes out where I've got how many FTEs on that revolving account, should I be adding that preschool because I'm not going to have ESER next year? So I need to either get rid of that position and we need to talk about that, or I need to put it somewhere else. So those are the conversations I kind of wanted direction from this committee is, should I put that under the tuition revolving account? To me, it made sense because we have the funds, it's for preschool, it's the tuition account that we get the money from the preschool. So.
Are you able to break out those four buckets and FY '24 is operating budget?
Yes.
And then relate them to proposed FY '25?
Yes.
If we could do that, then I am in favor of what you just.
Okay, so at the next meeting, have something a little more detailed so you can really see. Okay.
Cool, awesome.
Do my best.
Not to add more stuff because the more you talk, Pam, the more I understand the, how complex it is, no?
It really is.
So from here, so yeah.
That's why.
You're going to have to take a day off to do all your stuff.
Saturday will come in.
I know.
Gordon and I will be here on Saturday.
Well, it's hard. Question about the summer academies. Is there like a set curriculum, like how, how many kids are participating in here?
There is, there is a cap in terms of how many kids we can handle.
Yeah.
And so we try to reach out to students that we would like to join us, reach out to those parents first, excuse me, and then we advertise and take as many students as we can handle.
Is there any data showing that students that attend that, these summer academies, that there's lesser learning gaps or, yes?
That's working, right?
We had asked that starting last year, that that start to be tracked.
Yeah, okay. The only way we could track that is to look at where they were with their eye ready really and where they are when they come back in the fall.
Right. I mean, I, I think the summer programs are fantastic, but I want to make sure that we're doing the right things in the summer academies, that we're not just throwing money into this stuff, but, and we're seeing our improvement in our kids.
Return on investment.
You know, we're supporting our kids in the right ways, that we're seeing the learning gaps get smaller.
Yep.
So. And the mentoring academy as well, like how many kids are in this? And is this after school, like?
It's both during school and after school.
I think there is a write-up on that.
They come in.
There was, but it didn't say.
I'm sorry.
I read it and it didn't say.
Okay, I thought that it did.
So that's why, I didn't, unless I missed it, that's why I was wondering.
So the mentoring academy is more about support with socio-emotional, organizational, it's not necessarily academic oriented.
If it's during the school day? And this is aid students, it says. Oh, it does say? Says aid students.
The mentoring portion of it is, is relatively small, but professional development.
So everybody in the school gets PD on this?
This year, they've had all their teachers attend professional development, which has been really well received and hoping to reduce that off and hopefully have it.
So then is that what the money's for? It's for the.
Professional development and mentoring, and mentoring.
Okay.
Because they pair up students with a specific mentor.
Okay.
And so there's both meetings during school day, probably once or twice a month, and then there are after-school portions of it, such as I think I talked about at our last such as I think I talked about at our last meeting, they did a Saturday field trip over the April vacation to Westfield State.
So do the mentors get paid for being mentors?
Through the parents. We don't pay them. We pay, we contract with the academic.
Leadership.
I just didn't know if that, the 50,000 was going towards that. I didn't, I didn't know.
The contract is for mentoring and for professional development.
Okay.
Sandrine, I just wanted to mention, we're an hour and a half in. We have a little ways to go. If ever you're at a point that you have studies or other commitments, just give me a wave and feel free to, to get on with your night if you need to. I just wanted to mention that.
All right.
Okay, thank you so much, but I appreciate you being here.
You're always welcome to stay with us.
We always end with fireworks.
I will say when it comes to the AOA proposal, that we were at the steering committee at the group of students that were starting in January of 2024, their data definitely spoke to the need for additional support at the middle school. See the significant drop across all the reporting categories. There was a negative for that group. Backing up with data, there's the middle school student population that is in need of some additional support, at least based on.
Did you see data that it went up after those kids?
So we only saw the data that was from the beginning of the year, so we have to see the mid-cycle and then look at the particular subset of students.
Yeah.
That got the mentoring.
The students that were mentored last year, which I think was six in number, and we just did a small group and it was just mentoring. Specifically, their disciplinary.
I was just gonna say that, Gordon.
Data was far reduced and their, I can't say that, you know, their scores because I haven't seen that part, but I, I can say that a representative from the academy sits in at least once a month with the MTSS group at Birchland and goes through specifically those students because they want to know where they are.
Also helped attendance as well for states.
And they were, last year when they looked at this, they were dealing with a pretty sharp escalation in discipline data or behavior. They were looking for, okay, what can we do? They had discussed it as a team, discussed it a number of ways with the counselors and the administration and they tried a few things, but had been unsuccessful in sort of curbing it or reducing it.
Nothing else new.
Okay.
So we'll bring next meeting a breakdown of how the employees are coded in terms of whether they're paid out of, whether it be revolving account, whether it be operating budget salary line item, or whether it be out of a grant.
All right, last question. I know at one point I had someone who had been working for me and since part of their salary was grant-funded, I was accountable to providing them with like notice.
Yep.
So that's something that is happening or too.
Yes, every federal grant, yes.
Then the individuals who have their salaries part-funded through other funding sources.
We have to notify them.
Notification and they're aware that it's not. I just want to be careful too, as we're like starting to talk about these employees, I don't want to cause concern.
Yes.
And so anyone.
If anyone's.
All that point, like that were.
Any ESER-funded position, we've posted during those years as a school year position.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, and so tomorrow night, just a reminder, we are scheduled to meet and posted to meet with the town council at, their meeting is at 6:00. We're not too far along on the agenda, pretty quick.
Are we?
Pretty quick. I hope so.
We're under financial matters.
Where's the meeting?
Town Hall, Senior Council Aging. Yes, 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 okay.
I'll be there.
Okay. We have discussion on the 24, 25 school year calendar.
Okay, so at your places, we gave you a new addition because we had a mistake in the previous draft. So this gives you an idea of a number of things, but first and foremost, if tonight you wanted to at least look at the start of the school year for students and the end of the school year for students, we would start the school year on the 28th of August for students. And that would give us our regular Monday convocation day and then professional day and work day with staff on the 27th. And then it establishes the different vacations as you go through. So last year at this time, we did discuss that this year, this coming year, 24, 25, has an interesting configuration as you get to December because the Friday before what could be the holiday break is the 20th, and then that leaves one day, the 23rd on that Monday. Last year, we discussed taking it off and giving that full break that week and then the two days the following, or three days the following week. So that actually would be a more significant break than we've seen in a number of years, although historically, I think this has happened before. Want to say 2003, because I remember in 2003, I was assistant principal at the high school and we came back on a week like this. And if I remember correctly, the school committee may have given us that Thursday, or that Thursday was the first, and then we had a professional development on the Friday. I'm going to come back to that thought in a moment because it did get discussed with the collaborative committee and then the leadership team, but just something to think about.
For January?
For January, yeah. That was back in 2003. I'm just, just giving that, just giving you a little thought.
So the proposal would be to, to come back to 6th?
Not yet, not yet.
And then want to add another PD day?
Not yet, not yet. All I was doing is giving you historical facts. Okay. Going through vacations, you would have the February break on the, starting on the 17th there, which is President's Day. And then April break actually starts with the 18th there on Good Friday and then goes through the 21st, which is Patriots' Day. And then that week, and then the final day, if we were not to have any snow days, is actually Friday the 13th. Yeah, so we'll probably have to call snow day so we don't have that tech. But then if you add, if you were to add five days, it would be on the 23rd, because you have Juneteenth and the next week off. So that's just start of the school year, end of the school year, getting into where we've placed different things. We did not deviate incredibly in the month of September with the half-day for professional development. If you remember, with our discussions around half-days over the last two years, we did take away one half-day professional development that we used to float some, somewhere in the neighborhood of December and January. So we just have the one half-day. Generally, that professional development is building-oriented. It's not a district-wide day. It stays focused on the building goals and the buildings plan that. And so that's on the 25th, which would be a Wednesday. Then we have a half-day in the October, in the month of October, that's for parent conferences. So that's pre-K to 5. That's on a Thursday, the 24th. When we look at those, we are trying to move them and not hit one specific day because our specials teachers and our elective teachers often are seeing kids on different days. And so if we hit one specific day in every month, then they don't see those, those children on those days. As we go to December, we have another parent conference day on that Wednesday, so that's two Wednesdays that we've hit. We just try to stay cognizant of that. And then in February, we have the Thursday half-day and that's just pre-K to 2. That's Meadowbrook. And there was some discussion regarding whether, you know, that's something that the Meadowbrook staff still feels that they need. Right now, the indication, at least through the collaborative committee, is that they would like to keep that. Although if during negotiations, we wanted to broach that discussion, I think they would be open to at least discussing.
We're going to hear more about that from the Meadowbrook or the.
I think you're going to hear more about that from our side.
Okay.
Meadowbrook seems to want to keep it as the Meadowbrook Parent Conference Day.
Okay, so tonight, tonight, we're just really talking about starting day and end day and some proposed half-days. Is that?
Correct. I did want to mention though, the second professional development day, the first one, we always place on the November election day. So that's on the 5th next year and that's on a Tuesday. It's actually a federal election, presidential election. So you should get a good turnout over at the middle school. This year, the current calendar, we have it on January 31st, the second full professional development day. And the collaborative committee recommended maybe moving it out from January. And at least right now in this calendar, we didn't have anything going on in March. So there was some discussion in the calendar draft you're looking at. It's on Thursday, the 13th. However, there was discussion on putting it on Friday, the 14th, but wanted to get your thoughts on that because there's debate on both sides.
Why didn't they, what was the debate? What was, why they want to move it?
Days of the week.
We were trying to avoid different days of the week. We'd hit Thursday a couple of times.
Super choppy to break.
Yeah, but why did they want to move it from January to March?
January, we are already eating up some of the first part of it. They were coming off. We had the meeting right around the snow day. So they were worried about losing time in January, mostly at the high school level because if they have semester courses, they think about the 90 days and then they lose a day. They lose a day of teaching with that first group. So they were thinking that maybe March is a better timeframe, given that you have days off already in January and you also have potential, greater potential for snow days in January. That was their thinking.
Thoughts on the 13th of March?
Thinking around 13th.
No, I know what.
Yeah, they were just unsure about, yeah, about attendance in terms of, you know, would families see?
I would put it on Friday myself. No?
March is just tough. I mean, when you think about.
Any of tests.
Opening and now you're taking a full day in the window of that.
I mean, you could always put it back to January.
What was the January date?
We had it, we have it this year on the 31st, so it would be somewhere, you could put it on the 31st, which is a Friday next year.
I, I mentioned before that I had reservations about voting any of, of this in right now. Like we're opening negotiations with Unit A soon.
Should we just vote the first day of school now, just to have a starting day calendar?
It's January. I, I don't think it's, I don't personally think it's necessary. I think that if we're talking about professional development as one of the options in the collective bargaining.
Here and after, we could take the professional development out. This is just so that.
But we have professional development.
Vacations, we usually.
At the beginning of the school year, though.
Already started to improve additional professional development ahead of the school year. That's where we claimed one of those days. So if that's something that we're looking to talk about with Unit A and to explore options around how professional development is going to be structured for ELPS moving forward for the next three years, my concern is that.
My, I, I would say the negotiations will not be over four months and to give families a start date and school holidays and potentially if that start date could change year two of the contract and year three of the contract, but to not give families first day for a month, a couple of months.
Yeah, I, I just don't agree. I just think again, like if we're.
So when would you give fam, when would we tell folks when the first day of school is? At, when negotiations are over and the contract's signed?
I mean, I think that there's conversations to be had when you think about even just the beginnings of the conversation, when we think back to budget. You have a brand-new software system, brand-new IEP system that's coming forward from the state. We have students who receive special education services. We have educators who are going to need training on that. We have families, that's a legal document. So as we're starting to think about just that one bucket, we need time in this calendar to support teachers with that so that students are getting what they need.
Agreed, but that's not going to be decided for months from now. And so I think just historically, we've given families an opportunity to plan their summers and their vacations, which are important because people do it ahead of time. And then we could, if the start date would potentially change because of additional PD days at the onset, then year two and three, I would recommend we go that way. I know you potentially differ.
I just.
But I would like to suggest that we vote on this tonight if the committee is willing to, but if not, I, I can stand. Sandrine, any thought, anything on this year's calendar that stuck out to you or next year's that we're proposing? But as we've said, everything's not set in stone yet, but.
I say, I understand what MCAS concerned for March. I understand it's a concern, but from a student perspective, keeping the PD day in March kind of gives a break because March is just such a long month. Then you don't have April vacation until late in the month. So having that day as like a break would be great. But I can understand why it would be in January.
And then this year, we didn't have the half-day before the Christmas break and next year, we're not proposing it either because of where it falls. Did you hear anything from students this year about that? Parents, families, anything like that?
I felt the decision didn't really work because we didn't really do any work in the first place. I spent all day coloring. So maybe put back the half-day.
Okay, thank you for your input. Any other discussion? Nella, how are you feeling?
I do understand having the day off in March as the PD day, but it also needs to be a P-day, PD day that's useful and impactful. And I've found from personal experience that in March, there's not much you can change in that school year that's really going to help. I mean, you're looking at data, you're looking at different instructional strategies. And January, you can still do that kind of stuff. March, I mean, you're, you're getting into the testing. So I don't know.
Other thoughts on that before I ask another? Kate?
No, I mean, I agree too. January is a bit more effective.
Gordon, you, you had mentioned the Thursday and the Friday of January in prior years. Is there a reason why?
Oh, all I was saying is that there was, yes, so sorry. I had forgotten I had put that seat out there. So there was a year in 2003 where there is a similar calendar and I'd have to go back to the calendar and see whether the first was on that Thursday, but we came back to a professional development day rather than bring students back. And so the district came back that year to a professional development day on that Friday. And then everybody else returned, you know, whether it was the fifth or the sixth.
But this year specifically, it ends on a Wednesday, is the collaborative committee recommending these vacations?
They didn't propose that. Actually, that came up in the leadership team.
But these vacations are proposed by the collaborative committee?
Well, the vacations are set somewhat by the, where the holidays fall. So such as February always incorporates the President's Day.
Right.
April always incorporates Patriots' Day.
But they're not recommending the second and third be rolled into the January?
They did not. That actually was a discussion at the leadership team, you know, do we take the professional development day? Do we give everybody, or the students anyway, that week? So you give the teachers the second and you put it on, if we're looking at a Friday, put it on that Friday, the 3rd as a professional development day. Was a discussion there.
Yeah. I don't know.
Because it means it's a choppy week.
You come back, you can come back for two days. It's not, it's not like coming back for one. I think it's.
Correct. I mean, if you had two professional development days, that would be ideal.
But when we'd have that two days at the end of the school year. And I know that.
I'm not necessarily thinking of it there or.
It's going to be easier to get into a year two than it is into a year one. So I would recommend that this board today approve a starting day and the two vacations if we're able to. I, so I throw that out there. I think that would be helpful to families, staff, just in planning their lives. That's all, that's all I'm trying to do. And then coming back after we have some discussions with Unit A, the collaborative leadership, and perhaps some different proposals for PD, there's been some good discussion about January versus March. So perhaps we take that back to collaborative.
Sure.
And, and revisit it and see what they think on, on that discussion.
So we'll take out that, the second PD day off the calendar if we vote anything in.
Yeah, I would say not even vote on the PDs.
No, I don't know.
Start in the two vacations so that folks can know that those.
If we publish it, maybe we just indicate somewhere in the news on the website that school year will start on this date and end on this date.
Well, we don't know when the end date's going to be, but it'll be the start date and the two vacation dates. And I think that's really all people need to know. The PDs are nice to know, but those are one day.
What two vacations are you talking about?
January or the.
February and April?
December and April.
No.
February and April, December. Okay.
I was like.
Well, no, December too, so the three.
But we just talked about potentially a professional development day at the Taylor.
And the.
So then again.
And not bring the students back to Monday?
I'm just saying, like that was just discussed. So how, like.
Yeah, but I.
That was just an idea.
I don't like it at all, so I do others.
Like the idea of adding the two.
Not coming back until January the 6th after leaving December 20th, so having 11, 17 days off?
Two weeks off.
10 days.
17.
10 school days.
18 days, or 16, two weeks and a weekend.
It was, actually it was interesting. It came. It was, uh, actually, it was interesting, it came up at the leadership team, not at collaborative, so. I'm not sure how the, I know how, um, one individual felt because I mentioned it to her.
And contractually, we won't be able to get that in because it's only, it's directly correlated to the, how it falls on the calendar. If we were to come back on a Monday, we're not going to take Tuesday, Wednesday off to then come back Thursday, or even worse, if it was to fall on a Tuesday, we're not going to take. Wednesday, Thursday off to then come back just for Friday, only to go back out for a weekend. I wouldn't think we would do that. If you come back on a Tuesday one year, so if we say we're going to add two P Ds at the tail end of the first, so the second and third will always be P D, which is kind of what we're saying right now, right?
No, sorry, that's not what I'm saying.
You're not saying that, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying it was, it was talked about that there could be an additional.
Not an additional.
That there would be an additional day off for kids on the second. Because of an, a professional development day in, in January instead of March. So all I'm saying is that if we're looking to go in the December break, we really can't do that until we've established a professional development because then you might.
I'm just saying, I'm not in favor of holding the students out until January sixth, and that's what you're proposing.
And, and I would say that.
Yes, you are.
I didn't propose that, that wasn't, and something that was.
I'm saying, if it is brought to me, I'm going to vote against the fifth and the sixth, or the second and the third not being days of school.
Okay.
And if that's the consensus of this committee today, then we can.
And it, and it wasn't consensus of the collaborative committee.
Right, but we could get consensus today, maybe, or maybe not.
To clarify. The professional development day was not the consensus of the collaborative committee placing it in the week of, um, January first on the second and the third.
This is, that's what I'm saying, this is the collaborative's recommendation as it exists now.
Yeah, they actually took the, the P D day and started on the fourteenth, it was.
Right, but I'm talking about the vacations, the blue, only the blue.
Yeah.
So the collaborative has agreed to this already, the blue part, I know we have negotiations, but it's months from now, and I don't even like the idea of not coming back the second and third, and I don't know if that's the.
Right, but I'm also going to put out there, we have had discussions historically as it relates to the calendar around even the half day of school before we break for Thanksgiving. I know I've been a proponent of taking that day off.
I'm not going to talk about that day now.
That's in blue, you're talking.
Okay, I want to, I want to do the December vacation, the February vacation, the April vacation, and the first day of school.
And again, I'm going to say no, because I don't, but that's my opinion.
I know it is.
Think like we are in a place without having further conversations. Well, I'm just, I don't think, I am not personally in a place where I feel comfortable voting on any of those items right now, that's me, I'm one of five.
And I, I would propose that we do at least agree to those dates in order to give families as much notice as possible, so what's a little of the rest of the committee?
I think that's a balance, I agree with Sarah that it's too soon to start talking about the P D days and it gets really gray, but I, I agree that I would be able to vote for the start and, and end date of.
Do you want to make a motion to that regard and then we can discuss the motion?
We're talking just about the first day of school? Okay.
And the, and the three vacations.
Three vacations, okay, so. Yeah, okay.
You could vote against it too if you, discussion brings you there, but. Kate, no, she's the determining vote, perhaps.
Um, no, I'm okay with. All right, I make a motion to, um, accept the proposed calendar for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five with the start date of. Um, August twenty-ninth, no, August twenty-eighth for students. Um, and the three school vacations as presented, as well as the final day of school in June.
Well, we won't know the final day of school in June because we may.
Got it, because of the snow days.
And we're not.
Yes, got it.
And further discussion to, um, decide on the P D days and the half days.
Further discussion to follow regarding P D days and half days.
Samantha?
Yep.
Motion made by Amy. I'll say, ah, see, yes. Second by Kate.
Sweated me out then, I don't want cases.
Sorry.
Other discussion?
I think it's too soon to vote on all these things too. I would acquiesce to start date, February and April, I think we need to think more on December.
Any other discussion? Hearing not in all in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed nay?
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. So the motion carries three to two. Excellent, democracy in action. I love this country.
We got to give families.
So we. Now we're going to start with, you know, the three vacations.
Yeah. And we'll, we're going to come back with other. I don't know, kind of discuss the P D days and the half days. And then, and then we'll know the end date based on our projections.
Because technically, that can still be the vacation even if a P D day is decided upon to be tacked right on to the end of the vacation. I mean, it's inconvenient to think about it that way, but there's still leeway within that.
You're going to have the kids come back on Thursday and stay home Friday?
I, I'm not saying that's what I want, but I'm saying in terms of happen, I'm just saying in terms of the discussion, that's still a possibility.
Could always add to the length, we won't shorten the length.
Right.
Yes, yep.
Sure.
Yep, exactly. Um, we have school committee dates to look at, so my first tentative reorg, what day of the week is that? I mean, that's always tentative, that'll be up to those that are on the committee at the time. Sure.
Me.
Just you? Oh, yeah, you're the singleton. Okay.
Me and Amy are next year.
The, um, the only other things that, uh, are a little bit different than this is that, um. We did look at, uh, we always have a recent one situation where we have a Monday holiday and then we have to meet on the Tuesday. Normally, you put that in Labor Day. So we meet the Tuesday after Labor Day, we didn't do that this year, we can do it if that's what you want, that would be, um. September second is Labor Day, so you'd meet on September third, and then we reorganize.
But why would we reorganize then, we would reorganize on July.
No, no, I'm just meant to reorg.
Oh, the schedule, yeah, 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 okay, sorry.
And then you have, um, you could, uh, possibly meet on January twenty-first. Um, and that would be, I think that's the Martin Luther King holiday, so you have a couple in there, but anyway, right now, the one Tuesday you'd be meeting is, you'd be meeting that. Week of Memorial Day according to this calendar, and it'd be on that Tuesday after Memorial Day, so if that's not something the committee wants to do, we can look at that again.
Thoughts, questions? Ms. Cole? I would tend to stand motion to approve.
To approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school committee meeting dates as presented.
Motion made by Sarah. Second by Nella, discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Carries five to zero. Finally, Maple Shade, fourth grade, team Connecticut Science Field Trip, Science Center Field Trip.
So this is, uh, as you can see. From Mr. Martin, Maple Shade, and this is the fourth grade taking a field trip to the Connecticut Science Center in April. They'll be traveling on travel cuz buses, and roughly ninety-one students going with twelve.
Is team half of the fourth grade, ninety-one see, is not all, but not half. So why does he say team, is that just? Like a rah rah?
Yeah, I think it's more.
Awesome. Questions, uh, we're approving cuz it move, it goes out of state.
Correct.
Any discussion?
I just have questions about that bus company, I, we don't typically cite the bus company.
Yeah, no, we don't, um, but we do generally, uh. Work through here, looking at the bus company, so we can double check that.
I've never heard of that bus company.
Are there minimum standards that we require for transportation, is that, is that where you're kind of looting on?
State and going on highways, like I, I've just never heard of that.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Anything about it?
Okay, so we can still entertain a motion with just further information on the bus company.
On the bus company, yeah.
Remind me, did we make the motion up? No, okay, somebody want to do that?
And I guess the why behind it, like why are we using a new, because would that be a new vendor, have we, do we have any relationship with them?
Not that I know of, uh, so it could be a new vendor, sometimes there's name changes as well, so we'll find.
It's great, great question.
I move to approve the Maple Shade, fourth grade, team Connecticut Science Center Field Trip. While getting more information on the transportation bus company.
And just the dates.
On Friday, April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Did you say where to?
No, did I, um, to Connecticut Science Center.
Excellent, thank you, motion made by Kate. Second by Amy, other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. You'll just make the.
I'll find out more right on the bus company.
Anything else? Uh, reminder tomorrow, six o'clock for those that can make it at, uh, the Council on Aging, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion made by Kate, I mean Sarah.
Second.
Second by Nella, any other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero, thank you, Sandrine, and thank you, Don, for recording.